Good morning, everyone. I'll call the order of the Board of Franklin County's Commissioner meeting for May 27th. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, if you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, one nation,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, today we have Pastor Drew Redding from Grace Community Fellowship in Ottawa. For the invocation. Morning, go ahead, Pastor.
Proverbs, chapter two, verses one through eight says this, "If you accept my words and store up my commands within you, turning your ear to wisdom and applying your hearts to understanding; indeed, if you call out for insight and cry aloud for understanding, and if you look for it as for silver and search for it as for hidden treasure, then you will understand the fear of the Lord and find the knowledge of God. For the Lord gives wisdom from his mouth, come knowledge and understanding. He holds success in store for the upright, is a shield to those who walk in whose walk is blameless, for he guards the course of the just and protects the way of his faithful ones." Heavenly Father, we pray that we would seek after wisdom, that you would guide us and lead us, that you would help us to find the way. In the midst of a world of competing voices, we pray, Heavenly Father, that we would hear yours the loudest. We pray, Heavenly Father, that we would know the best course of action to take, moving forward, that you would guide and direct us. We pray that you would ever make your presence known in our life, that we would be a reflection of you to those around us, that people would come to know who you are and know your love by our love. We thank you for all that you do for us, and we pray all this in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, thank you. The next is correspondence and organizational business. Derek, do we have anything under that item?
No, sir.
All right, is there a public comment today? Janet?
I have none.
All right. Brings us to our consent agenda, which would be to consider approving Commission meeting minutes for May 20th and the 22nd. Is there any tax change orders or claim vouchers?
There are none.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dunn, motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dickinson, I will second it.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right, items of business. We have none listed. Are we going to do everything today under staff reports, Derek? Is that your intention?
Yeah, my intention is just to discuss the most recent developments in the COVID-19 pandemic. Nothing we're going to discuss requires a vote from the board, so.
All righty. Well, then let's move down to staff reports. Like, we'll start with you, Derek.
Okay. So, as I discussed with each of you on the phone yesterday evening, yesterday, the state's disaster declaration expired, and with that expiration, local control over the management of the COVID-19 pandemic was restored. So, as all of you know, for, oh gosh, at least a couple of months now, we have been, local governments have been under state control. The governor's office has been controlling the management of the pandemic via her ADASTRA plan, which is a four-phase approach, basically, to managing this pandemic. Effective midnight yesterday, or midnight today, I guess, that plan is no longer in order, it just became guidance. And it's guidance that, obviously, the governor's office strongly encouraged local governments to continue following. I met with my team yesterday to discuss what the best course of action for Franklin County was. That meeting included Alan Radcliffe, Tom Winter, Nick Robbins, Dr. Bud Ransom, myself, Casey Brady, and Janet, as well as Sheriff Richards. What we ended up coming to was that Dr. Ransom, as well as, I mean, the team was in favor of Dr. Ransom issuing a public health order, similar to what we did at the very beginning of this pandemic before the state assumed control. And so, he signed an emergency order that states, practically speaking, it just orders that Franklin County, its businesses, residents, events, and activities continue to follow the governor's ADASTRA plan. And so, practically speaking, nothing has changed for those of us in Franklin County. We're continuing following the plan. We are remaining in Phase Two, which is where we were when it was officially an order from the governor. We will remain in Phase Two until at least June 8th. One of the key differences, now that it is per a county order, is that it will be county officials who make the determination when we move between phases. And so, Dr. Ransom, in conjunction with the Board of Health, which, as you know, are the five commissioners, and then county staff will all get together and make the determination on when it's appropriate to move forward. The metrics that we're going to use are outlined in the ADASTRA plan, though the primary one that we will look at is just number of infections. Fortunately, and God forbid this changes, but we haven't had the deaths and the hospitalizations that we've seen on the statewide level, and so, really, what we're going to be looking at is primarily infection rate. And one of the things that we're sensitive about is we don't want to open up too fast, only to turn around and have to shut things back down again. We are in favor of a more measured approach. And one of the things yesterday that got a lot of discussion was, what is going to happen as a result of Memorial Day weekend? I'm sure all of you saw on the news what happened down in the Ozarks. You know, how many other locales had similar events where social distancing wasn't being practiced, where groups of larger than 15 got together? You know, there's no way for us to know that, but we can carefully monitor and see if all of this behavior results in a surge in cases. And so, we thought that taking the next couple of weeks and staying in Phase Two and assessing whether or not we're going to see that spike was a more prudent cause of action than moving forward into Phase Three or doing away with any restrictions whatsoever. And so, Dr. Ransom signed the order late yesterday evening. The Board doesn't need to vote on that, it is a valid order that went into effect at midnight. I do think that, you know, a strong showing of support, provided you support the order, would be a positive thing, obviously. And we are here to answer any questions you have about it. Dr. Ransom is on the call, all of my team are on this call. So, what questions, if any, can we answer?
This is Commissioner Dickinson, because the state order expired, then, but we still have expenses? Are we still under an emergency declaration that we can potentially get reimbursed for any COVID-19 expenses?
We are, yes. You will recall, and you signed it, Commissioner Dickinson, I believe it was, and Alan, you can jump in, I believe it was back on the 15th, we signed a new disaster declaration that should keep us eligible for FEMA funding and reimbursement. And we also proceeded to sign a 60-day extension on that disaster declaration. And if you look at Dr. Ransom's order, you'll note that it expires on July 13th. That is actually the last day of that 60-day disaster extension. And so, we are acting under a local declaration, which will keep us eligible for that reimbursement.
Derek, this is Commissioner Dunn, I have a question. And it's come up in the public also about the number of groups that can get together. Some people felt that a group could be, you know, your family could be like one group. Maybe, I don't know how many, in one family, that would be one group. Or is it individually? The number limited to individuals? And that's kind of a confusion thing. What does a group mean? And is it an individual, or is it, you know, like a family group as being one?
Yeah, that's a really good question, Commissioner Dunn, and I know there's been confusion on that. And families, and this is my interpretation, but I believe it is the consensus interpretation, are considered one. So, for example, let's use churches, church services as an analogy. You go to church with your family, you don't have to sit six feet apart from your family, but your family unit, say there are five of you, you have to, as a unit, you have to collectively be six feet away from the next closest person or family unit. And so, you are allowed to be within six feet of your family.
This is Commissioner Dickinson again, because if we are now back to being a county order, then that becomes, so if somebody has questions on whether the business is open or should be open, that comes back to us as a county?
Yes, it does. Though I will tell you, Commissioner Dickinson, practically, that never really left us. Casey's done an outstanding job of letting people know that we are available at the local level to help answer their questions. And based on our experience, they've taken advantage of that. We've gotten a steady stream of questions for several weeks now, so I would anticipate that that continues.
Commissioner Dickinson, again, this is not a question, it is just a statement that I know that your team has been having to be pulled together on a moment's notice because we don't know what's going on from moment to moment at the state level. And also, Casey's ability to get the information out again at whatever hour it is, I appreciate all of your work and keeping us on our toes. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi, it's Commissioner Stottlemyre. I noticed on the layout from the state through their phases, they go into the group sizes in every phase except the last phase. Is that something we'll have to determine at that time ourselves? Whether to open it up or still put a number on it? When it goes through phase?
Yes, Commissioner Stottlemyre, I believe you're talking about the phase-out phase, which, under the most recent rendition of the state's plan, which is the version that we are following, yeah, that phase-out phase does not have a limit on gatherings. Certainly, that is well within our discretion to put a cap on that. And it's something that I'm sure we will talk about, both at the staff level, with Dr. Bud Ransom, as well as the commissioners. I think that adopting the state's plan made a lot of sense. It's a good plan, it's what we are already following. Several local governments are doing exactly what we're doing. That being said, I do think we need to retain the ability to amend that and add additional restrictions, or be less restrictive, as the case may be, as we proceed forward through this. And so, certainly, I think that mass gathering number is something we're going to keep a close eye on throughout this pandemic, which sadly, I think in some way, shape, or form, is going to be part of our lives through the summer and into the fall.
Thank you.
This is Colt. Will the decision to go to Phase Three start with the health officer, or the Board of Health? Or what are you envisioning there?
I think that that can look any number of ways, Colt. And I had this conversation with one of your fellow commissioners yesterday. I certainly understand, as the county commission and the Board of Health, wanting to be intimately involved in that process. I do think that Dr. Bud is the public health officer. I've said throughout this that we are awfully lucky to have him, and his opinion carries a great amount of weight. We have staff that have developed expertise in this. And so, I certainly think that it's in the best interests of the county that Dr. Bud and staff are heavily involved in this. That being said, I think that having thorough discussions with the commissioners about it is a very good idea as well. And so, that can look however you would like to see it. We can continue to meet like we have been and make recommendations to you. We can have study sessions when we get close to June 8th, where we can all sit down as a Board of Public Health and staff and go over that. It's certainly what you would like to see happen.
You know, I'd like to hear, talk to Dr. Ransom about what he's comfortable with. I want to start by saying, I think he's done a great job. You know, sometimes when you have somebody who's particularly interested or a professional in one category, they become, you know, over cautious in that category, or over, you know, and definitely, I don't think it's happened. I think you've done a great job. The flip side of that, I don't think it's fair to saddle the public health officer with policy decisions if he's not comfortable with it. You know, you're kind of thrown in the position to take a somewhat, it's not political, but it's being called political, decision, I don't think that's fair to you. I think we need to do what we can to support you. But I want to hear what you have to say, doctor.
Well, I really do appreciate everybody's input, all the Board of Health, all of you commissioners, and all the Health Department, and everybody who's participated in this. So, it isn't just my own decision. I think, you know, the goal of moving to Phase Three on June 8th, or at least reevaluating at that time, is appropriate. And, you know, we're going to keep our pulse on how many new cases over the next week. You know, if we don't have a significant increase, then I think, you know, we'll get together and probably decide to move ahead. If we have a bunch of new cases, as I've kind of feared, you know, with everybody getting a little more active, and maybe, you know, I don't see as much mask-wearing as I saw a couple of weeks ago. I'm concerned that, you know, we may have a little bump in activity, you know, more cases. So, if that happens, then we have to reconsider and maybe extend this longer. But, that's my thoughts on it.
Are you comfortable just signing the orders from now on, kind of as we've been? Do you want, would you like more board input and kind of make that decision? Basically, not just have your name at the bottom of it?
I'm comfortable, I can take the heat if people are unhappy with it.
Okay, all right.
I do like your input, I mean, but I don't feel like, I'm not uncomfortable signing it itself, you know. But I think it's always good to have a consensus.
You bet.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Dickinson, and Cole, I had actually talked to Derek yesterday. I said I would like to be on the phone call or have access to the meeting itself, not because I want to be a part of the meeting, just because I want to hear all the discussion. So, instead of getting a, you know, a five-minute recap of what they discussed, I can actually know how they reached the decision that they did, just to give me more knowledge of where we're coming from. Not that I want to, you know, be a part of the discussion, but I would like to at least hear it. That's kind of where I was at.
I think Derek would be happy to include you on anything. One thing I know, and I'm not on all of them, it's usually a series of calls, not just one, I think, and meet often, and about, maybe dive into different subjects, whatever happens to be going on that day. And I think maybe it's the sum total of all the discussions that kind of, like anything, makes a decision. But is that true, Derek?
Yeah, I would say that's definitely true. There are times when, yesterday afternoon's a perfect example, where something has just kind of unexpectedly dropped in our lap, where I would say, you know, the, I don't know how to describe it, I guess, where the conversation is a little more singular in its nature. And, but generally, throughout this pandemic, yeah, it's been a conversation every day or every couple of days, and just staying in touch and then forming recommendations that way. That being said, and you're right, Colt, I'm happy to include, we need to be careful about, you know, if I include three of you, then I've got a quorum, and I've got to notice up a public meeting. But if you all want more insight into the decision-making process, I'm sure that, I'm sure that there are ways we can facilitate that. But I would also tell you that I think my team and I do a pretty good job of explaining our rationale when we are in front of the Board and trying to explain to you how we arrived at the decision we made, not just the decision itself. But certainly, I think you are elected officials who represent a whole lot of constituents. I'll never fault any of you for a drive for more information or more understanding. So, we can certainly make that happen.
All right. Well, any other questions for Derek, the doctor, anybody, any of our staff? Anything on the phase plan? And questions about how we're going forward with this? Comments?
This is Commissioner Dunn. I agree with staying with Phase Two till June 8th and reevaluating the situation.
All right. Well?
Hey, Colt, this is Derek. I have a couple of other topics. I would prefer we just run down through my team, who, to the extent they have an update, it's going to be COVID-related. And then maybe after that, maybe after we talk to David Lee, if you could circle back around, I'd appreciate it.
Then we get back to county business, or?
Yeah.
Other than, okay, all right. Well, let's wrap up the discussion as far as it's COVID-related. Let's go down to Alan.
Good morning.
Good morning, Alan, go ahead.
I think the only thing I have to add to what Derek discussed already is we have to all keep in mind, and I've said this before, that this COVID-19 is not going to go away immediately. And one thing that we are really looking at and working real hard is knowing that after we have three-day weekends, or we have any type of event that goes on in the county, where we have large numbers of people get together, and right now, that large number is over 15, that we make sure that we're prepared for any type of surge in positive cases or a spike in cases. And we continue to work constantly through public health and the hospital and EMS and all of our other partners to make sure that we're prepared to handle anything that comes forward. And that's one of the main reasons in our discussion yesterday, we stayed in Phase Two for another couple of weeks because of this, the Memorial Weekend that we just had. And I also want to reiterate what Derek said, is we want to do it slowly so that we don't have to fall back on the plan any and put in more restrictions again. We want to continue to move forward and be able to handle the situation as it comes up. And I think so far with our team and all the work that we've done the last almost three months now, we've done a very good job in our county taking care of that and making sure that we've been able to handle anything that's come up. That's all I've got.
All right. Nick?
Good morning, this is Nick. I really don't have a lot to add. I think Derek explained the conversations very well, I reiterated it, so I don't need to. I will tell you that we're continuing to see an increase in call volume, so you can tell that everybody's getting back into what they were doing prior to COVID. So, we are seeing the increase in call volume in EMS. We are working very hard with first responders to make sure they have the right PPE. I know Christie and Tom Allen have all been doing a great job keeping that up for our first responders. We are still looking forward at doing testing of responders and working to get an image and testing going. So, a lot of things working on the backside that I hope I can report positive things out later, so, or not positive. Well, that's all I have unless you have questions.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. Are we anywhere close to being able just to do random testing?
If, what we keep running into is the constant changes of KDHE. They, as soon as they start to open up to look at taking more things, they get an influx of tests from other counties that are having surges, and they back it back down. I know talking to Dr. Ransom, we're anticipating probably in a couple of months having the ability to do a lot of it within the OFP lab. The antibody test that we just got in, that we're working on, can be done at the lab. And the PCR nasal swabs, we're looking at a couple of months being able to do those in-house and not have to send them. So, when we get to that, I think we'll have a whole lot better opportunity at doing some of that. But right now, we're just busy doing contract or contact tracing. And, you know, I believe we've tested well over 900 people now, so we're getting a good sample of what's out there.
This is Commissioner Stottlemyre. Nick, how many outstanding tests do we have out there that hasn't came in?
I was just looking at that, and it looks to me like right now, we have less than 20 out. Um, but what we did yesterday, we're looking at about 22 tests that are outstanding right now.
What's the turnaround time on them now?
We're still seeing a turnaround of about 24 to 30, to 36 hours from KDHE. Quest is, uh, right around that same timeframe too. So we're able to get them out, get them turned around pretty quick.
That, that sounds good.
Commissioner Dickinson.
This is Commissioner Howard.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Howard. Uh, Nick, I have a, a question. Um, I know an individual that had the, a test and, uh, it came back as positive. Um, they went for some reason and had the second test, uh, somewhere else. It came back negative. Um, he's, so they're not really sure where they're at and they're, I guess, going to look for a third test maybe. But are you seeing much of that possibility? Of having negative tests that may be positive or positive tests that another test will show negative?
If Dr. Ransom's on, I'll, I'll let him come back at that too. But what I've learned with that is we continue to see from the state, there's a possibility of if you have a positive test and are positive, once you went through the 14-day period that, um, required, you come back, you can test negative or positive depending on the residue of the virus left in your, in your, in your nasal passage. So you can test it positive up to two or three months. We've seen individuals that will test negative and then we test them again a third time and it's positive. Uh, which right now they're recommending that if you do have a positive test, you don't have a ne, you don't, you don't go back and get retested because they don't know how long that will stay in the, uh, in the body. So I think with that, Commissioner Howard, that I, uh, that I think have unknown a lot of people. And Dr. Ransom, if you want to chime in on that question, I, I welcome that.
Well, the tests aren't perfect. I, and I don't know the, I don't know the total correct answer on that. Uh, I think if the patient is symptomatic, I think they need to be retested in that circumstance. If they're not, and yeah, I'm not sure what the sequence of that testing, I, I kind of know who you might be talking about, Rick. But, uh, I don't know all the details about that either. It's certainly true that somebody can test negative and, and then positive just due to some residual component of the virus. But it also has to do with the technique of how they're doing, how the test was done. And, you know, I simply don't have the complete answer of what to do. I think if the patient is, if the person is symptomatic, I think they ought to be retested. And if, if that's positive, then they need to be considered actively infected. That, I guess that's what I would say.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Dickinson, have a question?
I have one comment and one question. Um, my husband had been in contact with somebody who had been tested and it took a whole week from Wednesday to Wednesday to get those results back, um, for us to know that he actually was negative. Um, so it, it's unfortunately the turnaround time is not as good as we hope, I think, sometimes. Um, the other question I have for Nick is, um, how close are we to not being able to contact trace? I mean, at some point we'll get so many infections that it just is not, um, prudent to do that?
I don't have a good answer of how far we are from that. I will tell you, we have been very lucky that every case that we've had, except, besides, I believe, one, we have been able to easily trace that contact. Um, so, you know, I, I, I think we're kind of in the same boat with what Dr. Ransom and Derek both said about, you know, Lake of the Ozarks, people being, seeing you go to, a quarter of the people are wearing masks that were wearing them last week. So eventually we're going to see community spread in this community and it's going to be impossible to trace them. But right now we're not there and, and I'm, I'm hoping we stay that way. So to answer that, I don't, I don't have a good number or a good time when, as long as people stay, take the precautions, I, I think we'll be fine.
Safe to say though, as of right now, the volume you're seeing is well within your capabilities of tracing and, and handling?
Yes, everything we've had recently has been very easy to trace and we've had plenty of staff and, and the ability to do it. We have had conversations of, uh, what it will look like when it gets to that point where we, we need more staff. And, uh, we're in the process of dealing with that right now.
All right. Any other questions for Nick before we look to move on? All right. Sheriff Richards, are you on?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Sheriff Chairman. Um, as the board, I'm sure is aware, we did have a, uh, an inmate that tested positive for, uh, COVID-19. As we continue to reopen our business and as a, as a community, we knew that this was going to inevitably happen. The protocols that we have in place have been in place since, uh, well before the state implemented anything. And, uh, we've been able to, to, uh, to follow those. We do the questionnaires, uh, we're taking their vitals, we're doing all of those right things. And then helping keep, um, inmates separated, uh, from regular general population when they first come in. Everything that we've been putting in place, uh, is this, uh, this is not the first inmate that was tested. Uh, it's just the first inmate that came back with a positive, as a positive test result. So, um, our, I believe our procedures and protocols that we're using are, are pretty good. They seem to be effective. As, as this has been progressing, we've been down in the 30s in our, uh, inmate count. But as people, as has been mentioned, we're getting a little restless and they're out doing things. And, uh, our inmate count is now up to in the low 50s at this point. So, um, we're, it's just probably inevitable that we'll see more, uh, of these. I believe this was a case, um, had this individual not come to jail, they probably would not have been tested. So that could end up, you know, a, a good thing there as well. So, um, the inmate did not, was not in contact with any other inmates at all. Um, it was just contact with our deputies during the arrest process and then, um, some of our staff. And, uh, so as I said in the release, we're all following the, uh, all the guidelines that have been, have come out from CDC and, uh, our health department and, uh, but we're still able to maintain right now. But if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Uh, Commissioner Howard, um, Sheriff, I do have a question. Uh, that inmate's been released, correct?
That's correct. He was released on bond.
Um, is he being monitored to see that he follows the quarantine?
Yeah, that's, uh, he, he was served with his, uh, paperwork, um, before leaving, uh, before leaving our facility, um, and which instructed him to, to quarantine or isolate whichever it is there and, uh, and to be, to be following all the health department guidelines. So, uh, Nick and I talk regularly about various people that are on those orders and, uh, and we, we're working together to make sure that, that we know where everybody's at.
Okay.
All right. Um, Janet?
Uh, real quick, Cole? Go for it. Yep. Last thing that I, that I have, I don't, and this is not COVID related, but, um, um, Jimmy Reader, um, is, has announced that he's going to be retiring. And, um, we're going to have a, um, a very informal reception for him on Friday from 2:00 to 4:00. Um, just a little drop in and, and go type thing, so we keep our numbers down. But that's going to be in our training center, um, over here on Beach Street, uh, Friday from 2:00 to 4:00. Jimmy's been with the county for, uh, over 20 years and, uh, but he's moving on to a different stage in life and going to be, uh, doing a career change. And we wish him best of luck. And, um, if any of the commissioners are, uh, wanting to come and, and, uh, congratulate him, it'll, we'll be here and, uh, Friday, 2:00 to 4:00.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Janet? Uh, Janet, are you? Okay, all right.
This time.
Okay, thanks. David? Public Works, are you on?
Yes, uh, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
A brief update from Public Works, uh, the Iowa Terrace Project, uh, that bids next Friday. Uh, so I plan to have the, uh, bid approval for you on your agenda on the 10th, uh, if all goes as planned. Uh, the bridge work on Shawnee Road is coming along just fine. Uh, we've got, uh, basically one more concrete pour to go to be able to finish that up. And then, uh, the dirt work to restore the area, uh, to how it was, uh, previously. Uh, however, the, uh, the rains that we've had here, uh, over the last few days and, and last week, you know, we're going to have to rebuild the, the dam on each side of the bridge and pump the water out again and able to get in there to, uh, to work. Uh, but if all goes well, we're hoping to have that done, uh, here in the next week or so. Uh, we did discover another bridge issue on Ohio Road south of Haskell. It's a small wooden structure that has a, what appears to be a, um, one of the wooden, uh, beams is, uh, has been damaged. So we've got, uh, High Plains is going to go out and, and kind of give us their opinion. Uh, depending on which direction we decide to go with that, that may become an agenda item for you all at some point, uh, here soon. Uh, some of the work that we've done recently, uh, we've replaced, uh, crossroad tubes on Kentucky just south of Sand Creek, uh, one on Woodson just west of Arkansas. And we've replaced an entrance and cleaned the ditch on Haskell just west of 59. Uh, we've also been patching, uh, and we continue to cut up and, and chip trees. In fact, today, we're going to be up on 59, taking care of those trees that, uh, fell during the storm a few weeks ago. Uh, and the other thing that seems to be on the rise, uh, we always, uh, our folks are always picking up trash that folks have dumped on the road, but, uh, that seems to be a little bit more prevalent the last few weeks. And so we spend a great deal of time, uh, picking up after other people. The next, kind of the next big project that we're going to be working on, uh, which will take us a couple of weeks to complete, we're going to be pulling material from the ditches and fixing the roads, um, on the hill, hilly area south of Pomona. Those, those hills are, uh, they're steep, they're rocky, uh, they don't have, you know, there's narrow right of ways, all the things that, uh, create problems for us, um, uh, exist there. So we're going to be out there trying to take care of those over the next few weeks. And on the solid waste side, um, as you recall, uh, we, uh, contracted with SCS engineers to update the volume and life expectancy calculations for the landfill. And I am anticipating, uh, getting those results, uh, really just about any time here in the next week or so. So, uh, that, that'll be, be another agenda item for you in the near future. And that's all I have at this point.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for David? All right. Dave, Derek kind of indicated he had some other items to, to sum up, so let's go back to Derek.
Thanks, Colt. Um, a couple of things. Janet and I have a meeting at 11 o'clock today, our Zoom meeting with David Artaberry, who most of you know as our financial advisor. One of the interesting things about this pandemic, um, and its effect on the economy is that it has caused interest rates to fall. I think that as fiduciaries of tax dollars, we would be remiss if we didn't explore opportunities to take advantage of that. And to that end, uh, we have the opportunity to refinance one of our outstanding revenue bonds. Um, and that's going to be the subject of the discussion. But it's my belief based on David's analysis that we could save approximately $360,000 over the life of that loan if we refinance. We were currently, the bonds are financed at a rate of 4.11%. We think we can, uh, cut that in half and get it down somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.95%, which I believe the life of those bonds is through 2031. They are the 2011 series. Um, you, Janet could probably tell you what those bonds were used for. But hopefully, um, that conversation goes well and, and certainly it's our intention to bring that back before you, um, provided that, um, you know, this goes the way we think it's going to. And so, uh, do you have any questions about that?
Good news.
Commissioners, those are for the juvenile project.
Okay, well, we will be in touch then. We're going to have that meeting today. And, and for those of you who've been through this before, i- it is a fairly lengthy process. We'll have our bond counsel involved and it will require, uh, at least a couple of meetings, uh, involving the county commissioners. So you'll learn more about this as we advance. But I believe pretty strongly we're going to be able to make it happen. So, uh, the next thing, um, Casey has been working on rebranding. Um, she sent all of you, and we've ran this through a, a committee of staff first. She sent all of you a proposed logo and color scheme. It's nothing that I'm looking to have you vote on today and, and we can bring it back in front of you for that. But she didn't hear back from any of you. Do you have any thoughts on that logo and color scheme? Um, you like it, dislike it, things you'd like to see different?
Uh, this is Commissioner Dunn. Uh, I didn't care for any of them. That's just my opinion.
Okay. What would you like to see, Roy?
Well, uh, I didn't know for sure why we even need to be rebranded. That's, that's one of my questions. And, and, uh, I like the logo we have now. That's all.
Okay. Other thoughts?
I guess this is Commissioner Talmeyer. I'm looking at him right here in front of me. The only thing I, it doesn't distinctly represent Franklin County Courthouse, I guess. That's my only, I don't mind. I don't mind. I know you have to update from time to time. I just didn't, I can't look at that building and say, I know that's Franklin County Courthouse.
Okay. And I think one of the challenges, uh, man, and that resonates with me, Don, because I've had the same thought. I think one of the challenges that we have is the more detail you put into a logo, the harder it is to, and the more expensive it is to use that logo. And so you, let's say you want to get shirts embroidered with the logo. Uh, you know, you put so much detail into that courthouse, you're going to, I mean, you either have to make the logo massive in order to see it or it's a, an incredibly intricate process that, uh, it's just very difficult to do. But certainly we, you know, I, I get that and we can explore adding more detail. But that's what, that's one of the challenges.
Yeah, I agree with you. I just, you know, that just, it's my first thought.
I think that top right, that top right one's sharp. Of course it has the most detail. But, uh, and, um, I think it looks fine in black, but, uh, the, the blue looks nice too. Commissioner Howard, are you on there? Have you taken?
Yeah, I, I saw it. I, I don't have a problem with it. I thought they were okay. I kind of agree with what Commissioner Dunn said, but I had no problem with either one of them that, uh, that Casey sent to us either. I'm okay with however you choose to go.
Commissioner Dickinson, what do you have thoughts on this?
I would. This is Commissioner Dickinson. I wouldn't mind seeing other options besides just one.
All right. Of course, rebranding something we discussed, it's been a little while back. And of course, the world kind of went crazy since then. But I believe that is something we we touched on one of our study session meetings, maybe it was our board retreat. Casey kind of walked us through that and her thoughts on there on that. So and and we we listened and agreed. So to to look at options. So that's maybe the that's where why this is in front of us to answer that question. All right. Anything else, Derrick?
Well, that was a pretty wide ranging group of opinions we got. So I I mean, this is was always something we were going to bring back and and discuss. And I think when we start meeting in person again, that would be the perfect opportunity to do this. Like it's given everything that's going on, this is not a hot button issue. I we can, you know, what I'm hearing is of the two options, the one with the more detail is preferable. We can see if there's a way to add even more detail to make it distinct, try to make it more distinct. I'm just I'm trying to come up with options that work for all five of you. I think I understand where you're at. Commissioner Dunn would prefer to stay with what we have. Commissioner Howard's a little more ambivalent. Commissioner Stottlemyre would like to see more detail. Colt, I think you're generally okay with the one with more detail. And Commissioner Dickinson, you want to see more options. And so I'm trying to figure out how to reconcile all of that. But I don't know that that's something we need to do on this call. I can work with Casey on it. And at some point in the future, we'll we'll have a study session and.
Yeah, I think it's just going to be a tough thing to do over the phone. So.
Yeah, I agree with that. All right. Well.
This is Commissioner Stottlemyre. Casey probably spent a lot of time at this, I understand. But as do we have comparisons to what other people has rebranded in counties and what they have tried to do?
Yeah, we we can. We can probably come up with that. I mean, at the end of the day, this is this is maybe the most subjective thing that that we'll ever do. I mean, this is just going to be based on what meets your eye and what you like. And that's what was always going to make this project challenging is different people have different opinions. But but yeah, we can get some of that info, Commissioner Stottlemyre and Colt, you're right, we we can't really do this over the phone. So we'll put it on a study session here when we start meeting in person and we can sit down and have a more productive discussion there.
All right.
That's all I have, Colt.
Okay. Let's go to Commissioner Comments and Board Reports. Commissioner Dickinson?
I really don't have anything for today. Maybe a quick question is, as a commission, then we are probably until we hit three, we're going to continue to meet as we're meeting now?
I believe the the plan is in our next meeting would it's the option is to come on in if you're comfortable. So.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah, I did have a everything's webinar anymore right now. I haven't been I do send out notes to all the towns that I usually meet and let them know that those county can go to a phase three, that I would be attending their meetings again. And that we are, we're not even meeting in person. I haven't seen anybody. And what is it March the 18th or something like that? It's been quite a while since I've seen anybody. Nice to everybody. And I have one of the meetings I was on was a teleconference of the Merzine Basin Advisory Board, which I sat on, Larry Waller was on there. And we did send out our recommendations to the state of Kansas on things that we'd like to see happen in the Merzine Basin over the next year. And we were presented with the state budget and the allocations for the six counties that are in our Merzine Basin. And Franklin County was allocated 154, almost $155,000 towards efforts for Merzine Basin upgrades and water systems for the next year. The only other meeting tomorrow will be on the webinar with the Solid Waste Authority will be having our annual meeting. And it'll probably be one thing about that, we probably don't have to worry about because they're only meeting once every three months. So we got three more months before we'd have to meet again. So we may only have to do this one time. So that's all I got.
All right. Commissioner Howard?
Yeah, I don't really have anything. I want to kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Dickinson said. We still have and throughout this whole discussion, we've talked about with Dr. Ransome and everyone else. I don't understand why we are going to go back in next week, one week before. Well, it's not even a full week before June 8, when it's actually going to be discussed whether to move to phase three. I I think it does make sense to me that we're going to go back into the chamber. And I know that you gave the option, Colt. But anyway, I to me, I think we should stay out, do this as we're doing right now, next week, and then on June 8, when we're looking to maybe moving forward to phase three, we discuss that. I don't know why we're going to go back in right in the middle of a of a phase. I think we should stay out. And I think right now, we still got county employees that are working from home. I talked to Derek, he said if we do go back in, he's not going to have all of his staff in the in there at one time. It just makes sense to me to do one more week as we're doing. And then this be discussed on June 8, whether we move forward. And if we move forward, then we go back. That's all I have. And possibly, I probably won't be at that meeting next week if we go back in. So just that's where I stand.
Commissioner Waymar?
Yes. Go ahead, Don.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, I kind of agree with Rick. I'm like I am. I'm ready to get back in and have meetings. But I mean, they're just like a lot of people, ready to do a lot of things. And I feel that we can't, even if we were there, our labor employees wouldn't be there. We wouldn't be able to get the public in there very well or accommodate. So I'm all right with giving it another week and see where we're at.
Okay. So I know you were particularly in favor of coming back last time we spoke, Don.
Yeah, I said I would be if the things have changed a little bit.
Okay, understand. Derrick, do how many employees do we still have working from home?
We currently have, I'd have to think through the exact number, but we have some in IT, we have some in human resources, and we have some in community corrections. And I know when talking with Sari, she is starting the process of at least bringing one of her employees back. But we're not back in the office entirely in those three departments.
Okay. All right. Well, I know we brought a lot of folks back. We're opening up the courthouse. I mean, those folks are at work.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. Are we still platooning agencies?
This is Janet. In the courthouse, most of us still are, with the exception of the Register of Needs Office.
Okay.
Commissioner Howard, Commissioner Howard, again, I just, you know, I just feel like if we were looking at a month down the road or something, then I it may be a different scenario. I just feel when it's only we're only looking to June 8, when we're going to have this discussion about possibly going to the next phase and so forth. I just felt that one more week, and this is working just fine, would not hurt anything. And a lot can change. I agree, a lot can change by June 8. So who knows? So but anyway, that's that's my thought on it, that one more week. And being we are still having employees out and doing different things, I just think it wouldn't hurt us to go to June 8, and then that decision be made when a lot of others are going to be made.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. We can wait another week and then come back on the 10th. I'm not, I, you know, we're still able to accommodate, you know, the public and have a very functioning meeting this way. And that's fine. The only reason is settle on next week because when we had this conversation last time, that was the wish of some of you. And there was a push to do that. So let's just come back into the chambers on the 10th then.
And this is Derrick.
Go to a phase three, I guess. I guess that kind of assumes we go to a phase three. But let's tentatively plan to just come back into the chambers on the 10th. Go ahead, Derrick.
Sorry to interrupt you, Colt. I what I would say to all five of you is I don't I would not anticipate this looking normal for some time. Like if if and when you all decide you're going to start meeting in person, I am happy to be there to meet in person. But what I don't think is is prudent is having all of my staff come in there at the same time like we used to and and sit. Like, I don't think there's any need for that. I think that we can easily move staff in one at a time as needed, just out of an abundance of caution and to set a good example. And so, you know, I we we will make accommodations as we need to. I don't have, you know, super strong opinions one way or another. But I don't see when we start meeting in person, I'm happy to have my staff come and address the board in person. I just don't think they all need to be sitting in there next to each other at the same time, not when it's just so easy to make other arrangements. And so that's kind of where I'm at in terms of of my staff and I. Thank you.
All right. Well, we've talked about this enough. And as I understand it, I guess it's ultimately my call. And just from what I've heard from everybody, let's plan on coming back the 10th of June. So we'll do this at least one more meeting via teleconference. And Commissioners Comments and Board Reports, I think we were on Commissioner Howard. Were you done?
I'm done. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, I don't have any problem. This is Commissioner Dunn. Don't have any problem waiting another week until we meet face to face. I do have a board meeting with area agency on aging this Friday. It's just policy board, less than 10 people. And there won't be any spectators or anything at the meeting. So it's going to be a face to face meeting down at the agency. One other thing came up. I know maybe one or two other commissioners have been approached by Representative of Main Street, talking about the robbery and that sort of thing at Fourth and Main Street, at where the War Memorial is, the county doing something about it. I think it's something we can discuss and at a later time. But anyway, I just wanted to mention it. That Main Street representative has approached approached me about it. So that's all I have.
All right. Of course, I haven't been to any meetings to report on since we last met. So that I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Howard makes a motion.
All right. Commissioner Stottlemyre was in there first. It sounded like Commissioner Howard wanted to make second. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.